Please rise. Make some flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pillar, would you mind leading us to prayer?
On our heads. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for the beautiful weather that you've been giving us and the changes of the season. We pray that you watch over all of those that are involved in the education of our, of our youth in this community. We pray that you watch over the decisions made by this board this evening. In your name we pray. Amen.
Thank you. Hey, may the reading approval minutes for the August sixteenth meeting, please.
Motion to approve this standing.
Okay, motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern, discussion. All in favor of approving those minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Um, approval of the agenda. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Okay, motion by Pillar. Second, second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. If I may, engineers report, Jared is not in attendance and is not on the phone with us either. Unless we need to get ahold of him, he said to be available for a few minutes. So, anything anybody needs to ask? Questions, concerns from Jared? Monty? You talked to him already, or?
Just talked to him. What's your?
Okay. Expedition Estates Special Assessments. Monty, what?
Well, as, when they did those repairs up there, it was discussed and they had presented a letter that they would like those costs assessed to the lots via special assessment process. So, we need to create the district. Uh, since there is no opposition, there is no protest, they waived any right to protest uh, in their pleadings to get the project done. Uh, we do have the costs all calculated and figured. There is no engineers' report at this point for that. Uh, basically, this will get the process started, then we, we can then forward it to the special assessment board for review, as I said, it's a $2,000 process. The only question I would have as we move along is, is it gonna be a year, two years for them to make these payments on this? Or, or how you wanna set it up? Will be something that'll have to be determined.
Was there any preliminary discussion with Williams Builders on, uh, duration or anything? Any expectations on, that they're thinking of when they, when they said, put it in, into the assess?
No, there, there were no real discussions about that. We did set it up, or... I, I guess, I took it upon myself that we set it up as five years. They can always pay it earlier and that we would include a half percent interest, since we used funds that we had on deposit, that we should get something back for that. So, if they don't pay it off immediately, they're gonna pay us some interest.
Okay. And the, uh, the existing owners now, they would, they would be part of that five year?
They did not include any of the, the lots that were built on. They only included the lots that were not built on. So, all those costs are assessed to those lots.
Yeah.
Cause they didn't wanna affect those that have already bought lots.
So, then on that map, all the lots are, all the lots that are owned by Williams Builders yet?
Yes.
That's correct.
And that's correct.
I had even talked to two people last week that would be considering wanting to build up there too.
Yeah.
And that's, that would be my concern on, you know, it, it's kind of a double edged sword. You do it for a long term and nothing ever materializes and it comes back to the city, then we're stuck.
Yeah.
But if you do it short term and then somebody's interested in buying a lot and, and the duration's five years, you know, that might, might be a good chunk of money. I don't, I don't know what it works out to on a per lot basis. You gotta get a lot on your calculation.
Yes, I do. Uh, the majority of their lots are less than a thousand dollars. The only one that is more is that commercial lot on the way north side there. That one's twenty-five hundred, everything else.
That's your best.
From three hundred dollars to seven hundred dollars.
Okay, that's, that's what some of our...
So, then we need a motion, Monty, to...
Yeah.
...set the boundaries.
Yeah, you would need to approve the resolution creating the district, awarding the contract, which the work has already been done by Bechtel paving. And then, as well as directing the assessment. So that the... It can go to the special assessment board for review and if they have any questions or have any other work that they, that needs to be done on it. And then, we would also approve the notice to the special assessment board of the costs that were incurred. The $20,000 worth.
I'm gonna say so, Wolf.
Second.
We have a motion by Pillar and a second by Wolf. Discussion. Role call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Homeowner.
Aye. Motion carried. Six A, local permit. And, uh...
For the school. Yeah, for the school to do their bingo and raffles throughout the school year.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Pillar, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Okay, six B, street closure request for Harvest Fest for this weekend.
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Stern, discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you. Under seven, eight, condemnation hearing for the Chantel Lace property. Uh, she, Chantel was served papers, uh, not at our meeting this evening. We already approved this happening. We're just hoping she would've made an appearance this evening to give us a plan of what she was gonna do to remove it in the timeframe. Monty, in the letter you sent her, does it, can she submit anything by writing or is it, it was only supposed to be?
It did not, you know, we did not give the option for submitting information in writing. It was a notice to appear for the hearing tonight.
So, then if she's not gonna do that, then we can decide to take step four, um, giving her a timeline of when it needs to be removed um, from the property and if she does not remove, then we go forward and remove ourselves and then build her back to it under tax.
Costs can be assessed back as specials? Yes.
So, um, I was talking about before the meeting, just what is the reasonable timeframe? To remove it, is it sixty days, ninety days? You know, now we're into winter, we were till May first and does that stretch out to June? You know, the animal that we, you know, we've faced this before, um, you know, sixty days is, I, I think that I'd like to see is sixty, set it at sixty days and go from there. You know? Thoughts from you guys?
I agree, I think sixty days is enough time and more often than not, we give them a little more time if they get started within those sixty days. You know, have a plan, if not getting it done. You gotta have a plan. I'd like to see it done within sixty days.
So, are we in agreement that we'll do, do that? And Monty, will you?
Well, we'll, we'll serve a notice on her again through the sheriff's department, so there is no question as to service.
Okay. Pat, any comments on that for us?
We're, we're doing sixty days.
Do you want a motion?
Please.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf to assess the sixty day timeframe for Chantel Lace on the moving of that, to that property. Second, the second by Stern. Discussion.
Would there be six days from the notice date?
From the date, sir.
Okay.
Any more discussion? Role call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Homeowner.
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. Reports. Uh, Mar Suer.
Nothing to report at this time. Do you know if we got our, uh, garbage pails delivered yet?
Not yet, we haven't.
Okay.
Okay, streets, Jason's not here, neither is Dave. Um, Monty, I'm here.
Not there.
Are we our new employee or?
Yeah, Mr. Dallinower is on regular part-time now. Um, Dave said they were having issues as far as getting the paint. So, they're probably hoping to get just at least enough to do all the crosswalks around the schools and at least the main street areas for this fall yet, but they're having issues getting some of the paint.
Finance, discussing library.
Oh, basically, okay.
Police, fire.
I just have, uh, Lois from Jim Wolf that the M car video cameras are dying and they're not fixable. So, he's gonna be giving some quotes on those and letting us know where we're at with those. Either the next meeting or the next. That would be it.
Um, have you seen the new fire truck?
I have.
It is beautiful.
Beautiful.
It's huge. It's about five feet longer than the old one. And, uh, when I visit with those guys, they're pretty excited. Monty, do we take care of the insurance or they?
Yeah, it's insured.
Is it insured?
Yeah.
Okay. And you're not like, you weren't gonna take it out of your run.
You've gotta bill for insurance in here.
Is there any insurance? Okay, good. Pretty proud of it. Uh, Buster, HCD.
Okay, so, uh, you know...
What did you talk about the natural gas too?
That's what I'm gonna talk about. So, we met as a MACAD group, you know, the Mercer County Economic Development Group. By last number on, I talked to you about the coal communities grant opportunity. And so, one of the things that we did is, is we met as a Mercer County Economic Development Group because we thought we needed a, probably a group that would drive some of this or at least in name. So, basically, that's what we have kind of done is channeled our efforts through MACAD. And a couple of things there. One is, is that they did give us permission to, when I say us, basically Bieber and I, permission to, uh, explore the possibility of hiring a grant writer. And, and some of that would entail, uh, some of those costs, uh, which we don't have as of yet. Uh, we talked about the list of, of, uh, items that were on the list. Uh, and there was quite a extensive, um, list. I think there were actually like nine categories on the list. But after kind of flushing all of those out, the, the group thought that our number one priority should be to try to get natural gas coming to the communities. Uh, and after, uh, some discussion about that, a couple of options that we thought would be feasible would be to try to come in from Glanollen or Zap. And since that time, since that meeting, we've met with representatives from Dakota Natural Gas. And they have agreed to at least in the initial phase, do a, a, um, cost analysis for us relative to what that will probably look like. And from some of the preliminary information that I heard, that, and we were part of a, Jerry and I and Monty were part of a joint session today with Travis and Bieber, uh, at July. And they're talking about maybe seven million to bring the line over from Glanollen, which to me is a very, very reasonable because, you know, back seven or eight years ago when I first came on board and we were looking at tapping in, uh, northern border. Uh, at that time, we had talked about coming in from Hebron, which is about sixty miles. That was a million mile at that time. And now, this seven million dollar, that's, and you know, wrong figure, you figure it's forty miles. It's about thirty, they figured forty, you know, for seven minutes, that's pretty, that's pretty reasonable. So, our hope would be that, you know, that we're gonna continue to pursue that avenue and, and see if that is, uh, we could get a grant writer possibly in place to help us with that because it's a government grant and so it would, it's going to take quite a bit. You know, the piece that we haven't talked about, and I'm not sure how that's all gonna, how that all would fit in, and of course, that'd be engineering and those kinds of things. Now, Dakota Natural Gas, uh, has been involved in some projects in the state already and they have a pretty good reputation. So, that part's, uh, definitely promising. So, we'll see where that, we'll see where all of that takes us. And again, in case you don't recall, for the coal communities portion of that three billion dollar grant or thirty-four billion dollar grant, okay? Three hundred million is dedicated to coal counties, okay? Now, realize that there's twenty-five identified agencies across the United States that have been identified as coal communities. Uh, and we're like number eleven on the list and we belong to the, we belong to the Rocky Mountain region out of Denver, there, that's, that's their home base. And so, uh, in talking with their regional representative, after I had gone through the list, he suggested that we probably, that we wouldn't let down to no more than three. But he did say, he said, I think natural gas would be your best bet to try it. Because there is a portion of that that can go to infrastructure, you know, so that they break those up. So, there was some discussion about that. There's also a hundred million nationwide that's going, is going to be dedicated to tourism, okay? And we think that that should be something else that maybe we have a nice opportunity. Possibly we could get some dollars out of, uh, especially in our area and the lake and those kinds of things. The only thing is, uh, Bieber and I are not going to be the, the drivers behind that. We just, you know, just trying to tackle the coal stuff, I think it's gonna be plenty. The other thing about all of this stuff is, is they don't have necessarily all of the rigs out as of yet, okay? And the timelines are pretty short, okay? So, we really need to, uh, try to get some of that, uh, stuff in place. Another thing was, there's dollars also available versus feasibility stuff. And there were other projects that we had talked about, but right now, I'll just, well, I'll just leave it at that and just say that natural gases are going to be our main focus. Daniel did an interview with me last week, I'm assuming that story will be in the paper.
I had talked to Bieber today as well as soon.
Yeah, so, so it'll be, it'll pretty much be public knowledge, that's what, uh, MACAD is trying to do, at least to start with. And we thought that that would be the logical place because what we talked about with Dakota Natural Gas is a two-phase process. One, the first phase would be a link from wherever we would access that line to Hazen and Beulah, phase one. Phase two then would be linking from there west and also east through the co, up through the county line and follow, that, right now, the, the plan would be, we would just follow the easements along the highway. Yeah, yeah, so.
And that's, and that's, Dakota Natural Gas has already worked with the state, I know.
Yeah.
Stayed right away easement, they, they know that process very well.
So, you know, that's the, um, that's the gist of it. I don't know all of the, other, I don't get into the technical stuff of it too much, but, um, and, um... So, I did have a opportunity and, yeah, I probably won't say anything about this, but I did talk with our local senate representative and to just let him know, uh, so that he would be aware that it's, you know, it's something that's gonna hit the paper. So, just one of those things.
And he understands.
Yeah.
He knows what it means for the communities, for the industry.
And you know, the thing about it is, is, uh, with, one of the other things that I, that each of us are doing, Bieber and I are doing locally now, is we're gonna reach out to folks that are, that we know are propane users and see if they would be willing to share their usage of propane with Dakota Natural Gas so they would know, have a little better understanding of the feasibility of some of that and so forth, so. Lot of, uh, work behind the scenes and, um, we'll see what happens.
And then for individual homeowners, you know, there's different things you gotta understand as well. You know, other than just natural gas is the cheapest way to heat your home, but if you have baseboard heat in your home, you're, you're not gonna be one of the people that are gonna sign up for that because you don't have ductwork. You can't replace baseboard heat with, unless you're planning to put ductwork throughout your home. But if you do have, you know, electric furnace, forest air furnace.
And of course, the, really, the big push behind it would be, is, um, it's very difficult to get big industry and to come into the community without having access to natural gas.
Yeah.
And so, that could, the idea would be that hopefully then that would be the next step. That we'd be able to entice some other industry to come off to this area. And that's part of the coal communities grant. It is how, if things do go south, how are you gonna position yourself so that you could maybe rehire like in just a different area, some of those same people and keep the, you know, keep the wages where they're at and those kinds of things, you know, so. So, I have a, I agree, maybe, I don't know, we'll see.
Lots of opportunity though, it'd be an economic driver for sure for our community. We, and we've talked about what's gonna happen ten, fifteen, twenty years down the road with, with our, this local industries, so. Um, we need to look at something like this. So, okay, Buster, any more?
That's all.
Okay. All right. Um, under my report, I was just gonna touch base on the natural gas as well, but we've already taken care of that. All right, are you Chantel?
I am.
Okay. Chantel, we had you on the agenda earlier, but I think if you guys wanted, I think we should visit with Chantel. Then we go back, uh, to our condemnation discussion and, um, back up to eight A. And Chantel, you, you're obviously sort of the paperwork, you received that?
Yep.
Great. Um, I guess, thanks for coming. Um, could you kind of explain, um, your plan to us for the property? And, and then we'll kind of talk about how, you know, we work through that.
Um, well, yeah. My name is Chris Goldberg.
Your name is what?
Chris Goldberg. Um, we were planning on remodeling it and fixing it back up and selling it. So, um, we, we, there was some demolition done in the inside to get it, uh, She-Rock a lot. Everything's fine on the inside, it just needs to be fixed back up and, and, and ready to sell. That's what our plan would be.
Okay. And you're, you realize that it's been condemned?
It has been condemned.
Oh, I did not know that. Yes. Okay, the paperwork that Chantel received.
I was just a moment's appearing.
Okay.
Would, I guess, the other question would be, would they be willing to let Lauren take a look so they have an idea as far as our coal inspection, to get, what it would take to get it up to.
Okay. I retract what I just said. We do have a city inspector.
Okay.
And would you be willing to let him come into the house?
Absolutely.
Sure.
Okay. Uh, because we'd have to identify certain things that need to be taken care of, assuming Monty would put their code. Um, and then there would have to be a timeframe of when this would happen. Just saying you're gonna remodel, um, I guess we need to, something a little bit more of a timeline.
Yeah.
That we would have one accept for that. If you said a year, we're probably not gonna say, proof, something like that.
Right.
But, um, Chantel, does, or Monty, do you have all of her contact information to get ahold of her so we get Lauren to get ahold of her?
If you can wait around just a few minutes, I'll write it for me.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll give you my contact information too, that'll be one, it's easier to get ahold of than she is, so.
Okay. But the property is in Chantel's name, right?
Yes.
Why, why you came in? Because if you didn't, we were gonna give you sixty days to remove the property.
Okay, wow.
So, I'm glad you came in.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay, so, anything else we need to? If, if that's, if that's your plan, um...
So, so, so the process here is, is Lauren would come in there, take a look at that. He would provide you a indication then of what would need to take place to get it up to coal. At that point, you would be afforded the opportunity to decide if, if that's something you still want to invest in and move forward on and stuff like that, because we have gone through the process now where, to date, the home is considered a condemned property. So, he would have to let you know. And oftentimes, when, when a property gets to the, the level in which they call it condemned, Lauren would say, you know, what you might have to put into it to get it back up to snuff may be cost prohibitive, so.
Okay.
Um, then I think what we would expect as, as a city council is probably reconvene then uh, to, to get a better understanding then from you guys, once you are informed what kind of timeframe you're looking at and then we can mutually agree, um, on what, what is appropriate for that.
Okay.
Fair?
Thank you, yes. All right, so we have a motion, uh, we made a motion, um, to move forward. We need to, uh, what's the proper terminology, Pat, to rescind that motion? How do we go back? We have to?
Well, you could rescind the motion.
So, we need a motion to rescind it.
But I have one other question.
Yes.
Chantel, I understand that you have become the legal owner, but is that now of record? Do you now have a deed of record showing that you are the?
My sister is the power of attorney and everything, um, she's, it's not in my name yet, but it's under my dad's and my name. But she would have to go and I, and switch that over, I can have her do that.
Yeah, I'd call the attorney, attorney that, yeah, but there's an estate there?
She's P R.
And she is the personal representative for the estate?
Yeah.
Okay, I think that that should be, there should be some evidence of record now that you're the owner also.
Yeah.
So, that when you apply for building permits, which you'll need to begin your reconstruction, you'll have the proper record ownership.
Okay, thank you, Pat. Okay, we, so we need a motion to rescind.
The person who made the motion originally, are they the ones that would have to rescind? That how that works, Pat, or, or any of us could say we're gonna rescind the motion that was made earlier?
Yeah, if you prefer, just have the people with the motion.
Mr. Wolf made the motion, second by Commissioner Stern.
So, motion to rescind?
Yeah, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. So, I guess what's gonna be the time, timeline now on this? Good question. When was?
Renovation room.
Yeah, are you, are you gonna come back in a month? I suppose we need to have, we need to have Lauren go in first.
Yeah, we, so whatever, you guys must know when, whenever we're through, tell them to check it out and then we can do you.
Cause his, his statement, he's gonna give you a timeframe.
So, I would propose saying, in getting in touch with Lauren, if he can do it sooner than later, then, then why wouldn't we, let's go ahead and plan to have you guys on the docket for next month's, uh, city commission meeting?
That's the thirteen.
October fourth or?
October.
Or are you on that kind of?
With it.
Well, to, to give Lauren, I guess, adequate time to, to go through there, evaluate and, and communicate. Let's go with the fourth of October, does that work for everybody?
Yeah.
Good.
It's nice to just have something written down so that we know what we're working towards.
Okay, so we have a motion and we have a second, any more discussion? Okay, roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Omenauer?
Aye. Motion carried. Thank you. All right, so let Lauren get ahold of you guys and you'll be back here on October fourth?
Yes.
And, uh, with a plan?
Okay.
Great.
Sounds good.
Thank you for coming in.
Do you want, uh?
Our information?
Information?
Yeah, that'd be, yeah, that'd be great, we'll get your phone numbers.
Okay.
All right, um, moving down to ten A. Uh, state water commission agreement amendment for additional funding. And that's the, that's the meeting that Monty and I were at with more engineering. And that's the additional three hundred and some?
Yeah, the additional three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
She's bringing it up here. Great. Thank you guys. Thank you. Have a good night.
The additional three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars from the state water commission for the water tank project, since the bids came in a little bit higher than anticipated. And like I say, it was approved, but it's a water commission, they just need the agreement signed so that everything, all the records are complete.
I make a motion to move forward with that.
Yeah, motion by Pillar. Second. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call.
Pillar?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Omenauer?
Aye. Motion carried, thank you. And ten B, county redistricting board. The, Mont, yeah, Monty, you wanna explain this?
Basically, after every census, every ten years after the census, the, uh, legislative districts, uh, county commission districts, all of those have to be reviewed and updated based on the population. The county auditor is proposing to, or requesting that the city appoint a person at large to serve on that board. Wasn't sure if we wanted somebody from our board to serve on that or if you just wanna put somebody else in there. They're proposing to have these meetings, uh, toward the end of this month and then, not sure exactly when this process needs to be completed, but...
I thought they were thinking that by the end of the calendar year, I thought they're...
Yeah, I thought it said something about the end of the calendar year. So if you guys have any ideas or if one of you wants to sit on that board?
If nobody really is excited to get on that board, I'll do it. Probably not. Excited? No? Okay. Pat? Oh, uh, then if that's the case, then we'll, we'll let the county know that I'll, I'll do that and Monty.
Thank you, Chris.
So then on that term, is that a ten-year term then?
But they only do it once, once the, once the districts are done, they're done for the ten years.
Well, I was curious, cause it kinda sounded like they do this every ten years, so I'm sure. Just for this?
Unless they've approved, unless they've approved the new line, it's, they're done now.
Thanks for clarifying that. Uh, eleven A, board appointments, uh, library and special assessment committee.
Did get the names and spoke with a couple of people, the library board, Keely Goder has agreed to serve the unexpired term of Mr. Grossman. And then, uh, Ron Karachka has graciously agreed to serve on the special assessment committee for the unexpired term of Ms. Snyder. If you're willing to appoint them, we'll have them do paperwork.
You want a motion to approve that?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Subtle.
Motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Thank you for volunteering for that.
Yeah.
Uh, roll call.
Wolf?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Omenauer?
Aye. Motion carried, thank you. Okay, that brings us down to approve of bills.
We have several pages on, on the table here, I guess that came in there. I'm surprised, I have electric bills on here.
Move to approve the bills. Motion by Stern. Second by Pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Omenauer?
Aye. Motion carried. Hey, Stern, thank you. Thank you, Pat.